Good morning, I'm Mayor Buddy Darn and I'd like to welcome you to the Halloween Workshop of the Orlando City Council. I don't know if it's appropriate or not appropriate, but we will be hearing from the Orlando Science Center today, and I understand they had, what was it Joanne? Spooktacular?
Spooktacular.
Spooktacular yesterday, which was a great success, as has the Orlando Science Center. And when I was a young legislator back in the early 90s, I had the opportunity to sponsor the last joint use PICO grant that went for a multi-purpose building, and there were actually two of them. One of them was for the Orlando Science Center and one was for an aquarium that never got built in Fort Lauderdale. So we in fact were the last ones to use that resource of PICO money to do the Science Center. Marcia, you want to introduce the workshop?
Thank you Mayor. Good morning Mayor and Commissioners. Happy Halloween. And this morning you're actually going to get a treat. No tricks, I promise. The Orlando Science Center has achieved amazing growth in some really tough economic times, and it's really due to a lot of things, but three things that I'll single out, and that's strong effective leadership, both its board and its staff, a solid strategic plan with measurable outcomes, strong community partnerships that are really propelling the Science Center to become one of the top science centers in the country. I'm really impressed with the number and variety of partnerships that are in place and that are being developed. Companies like Lockheed Martin, OUC, Siemens, and Northrop Grumman are investing in the Science Center because they believe the Science Center can help to fill the pipeline with engineers, technology professionals, and scientists. Colleges and universities like our own UCF, Valencia College, and Seminole College are partnering with the Science Center because they see it as a vehicle to communicate and disseminate some of the great work happening on their campuses around the world in science and technology. The Science Center is unique in what it can offer and how it can serve the community in terms of STEM, which I know we are all familiar with, science, technology, engineering, and math learning. It is a community asset that I know you value and that encourages lifelong learning, and I have to say that I'm very proud to have served as your representative on the Science Center Board for the past five years. It is now my great pleasure and honor to introduce the Chair of the Board, who serves as a volunteer many, many, many hours in support of the Science Center, and that is our own Renato Barbone, the Senior Vice President of Finance for Olive Garden. Renato?
Thank you Marcia.
Good morning.
Good morning. I guess I'll get right into it since Marcia used up all of my Halloween humor already. But we do really appreciate the opportunity to update you on our progress at the Science Center. Do want to thank Marcia for the nice introduction and for her dedication, participation on our Board as well. While Michelle is not here, do want to thank Michelle McCrimmon as well, since she serves on our finance subcommittee and makes valuable contributions there as well. Joining us today are also a couple other of our executive Board members. We've got Oscar Anderson of Southern Strategy, I think you all know Oscar, and Linda Perron, Vice President at North Highland. Thank you for being here today. In my day job, Darden does strive to make prudent strategic investments with a strong ROI. Most often we achieve those returns by basically driving revenue growth and leveraging a strong business model. And Joanne and her team, I think you're going to hear, have proven themselves very adept at this as well at the Science Center. They made very difficult choices to strengthen the business model back at the start of the recession to maintain the financial stability of the Science Center. They made prudent investments in programming, including inclusive community outreach and STEM education, growing revenues during the economic challenges of the last four years, which is really showcasing why they're such a critical part and an indispensable part of the central Florida community. And then the city of Orlando, along with Darden and several others in the community, invested in a successful green building project. And along with reducing energy consumption by about 35% at the Science Center, the project has had a positive ROI and created a stronger financial operating model. So thank you all again, because while there was broad community support, without the support of the city of Orlando, the project would not have happened. And we believe there are further investments that we need to make, leveraging the strength of the Science Center, and we'll again need the city and the community's support to clearly establish the Orlando Science Center as the cornerstone and hub of STEB learning in central Florida. So I'd like to introduce Joanne Newman, our CEO, to tell you a little more about that. Thank you.
Good morning Joanne.
Good morning Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you Renato and Marcia. We're very proud of our Board of Trustees. They are helping to move us forward. They're all very strong and prominent community leaders, and we couldn't do it without them. I'd also just like to take a second to introduce the senior staff that's here with me. We've got John Melosi, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning.
And Jeff Stanford, who is our Vice President of Communications. Okay, well, I want to start out by saying thank you to you, the city, and as you've heard from both Marcia and Renato, you have been an integral part of our success. We thank you for your vote of confidence and your support of the Orlando Science Center. You really are helping to move us in the right direction. And I think you heard Marcia talk about this a little bit, but we're very proud that in a tough economy, we are continuing to make progress and move the Science Center forward. We've been able to grow our revenue over the last few years from the $5 million range to the $6 million range. For the first time in the fiscal year that just ended for us, June 30, we established an operating reserve of $300,000. We also saw our second year of double-digit growth in attendance. We were up 12% over the prior year. That's such an important metric for us, especially the walk-in attendance, because that lets us know that we are on the right track. We've also been able to reduce our vendor payables that were running around 68 days. They have now been averaging 45 days. In addition to that, and you heard Renato mention this, we were able to fund the $3.2 million green building project that included full replacement of our HVAC system. We had a lighting retrofit, did the cool roof, moved all the equipment off of the roof and down into a loading dock, and we also were able to put some solar film on some of the large windows when you come in the lobby. And all of that, as Renato said, has led to some significant savings for us, which is helping us in terms of operating. The city of Orlando's role in that was twofold. One, we got a $350,000 block grant from you, which was invaluable, and also you took out the loan on our behalf to finish off the project. And we have a wonderful partnership in terms of that loan, where you agreed to take the interest that would have been paid on the loan and put that in a replacement and renewal account for the Orlando Science Center, and Science Center matches that payment. So also in terms of, we have an operating reserve, for the first time, we also have a renewal and replacement reserve, which is for capital and infrastructure changes for the Orlando Science Center, and we ended the year at $112,000 for that, so we are thrilled. The last bullet on this chart, we also opened our own preschool, again, many thanks to the city of Orlando. In order to do that, we obviously had to get approvals from the state, but we also had to amend the tri-party agreement to allow for the use of the preschool. The city's been great partners on that. We had to establish an outdoor play area for the children as well, that is adjacent to the Orlando Science Center building, and you were instrumental in helping us with that. So we ended our first year of operating the preschool with a capacity of 20 children, and I'm pleased to say we were filled. We were able to double that capacity to 40 children for this year, and again, we are filled. We actually have a waiting list for the Orlando Science Center preschool, and we are currently in plans for the third leg of that expansion, which will take us to 100 children. We are again working with the city of Orlando. I wanted to say thank you to John Perrone, Lori Botts, and James Burnett. We've had to work very closely with the municipal planning board and Parks and Rec in order to expand that outdoor play area a little bit further to accommodate the 100 children. So thank you for all of your help with that. I just wanted to show graphically how our attendance has been growing. You can see in fiscal year '08-'09, we've moved the bar by about 100,000 people on an annual basis. We also wanted to show revenue growth. This is moving it to 6 million, and you see our target for this year as well. The main drivers of that revenue growth have been the increased walk-in attendance, increased membership, and the preschool. As Marcia mentioned, we've worked on a strategic plan. We've also done a lot of benchmarking with other science centers across the country, and so what we've just talked about is kind of where we are, but we wanted to talk about where, what our goals are and where we're growing to. We want to grow revenue to $8 million. We want the operating reserve and the renewal and replacement reserve both to be at a healthy $500,000 attendance. We'd like to see that up at $400,000 each year, and we want to invest in new exhibit experiences for our patrons. We want to talk a little bit about the unique value that the Science Center brings to the community. I think it's important for us as a Science Center and the community to understand what our role is and what we can give back. And the way we see ourselves, I don't think there's anybody else out there who really can inspire and engage and capture the imagination of these kids the way the Orlando Science Center can. And it's not just the kids, but we reach students and teachers who do need our support, and we reach the whole family, everything from the youngest toddlers all the way to grandparents. We see many grandparents bringing their children to the Orlando Science Center. Our other main emphasis is in terms of sparking interest in STEM. You heard Renato talk about that a little bit, science, technology, engineering, and math, and I don't think anybody else really has the opportunity to showcase some of the wonderful STEM learning and STEM projects that are occurring right here in our own backyard. So to talk a little bit more about that and kind of the state of STEM and what's happening, you know, some people say, should I really care if I don't want to be an engineer, or I don't really care about math? Should I care about STEM? And what we're saying is yes, you really should care, and the reason is that innovation, which is largely driven from advances in science and technology and engineering, is the sole driver of the future economy and really helps create all of those new jobs. So, you know, when you start to understand that, and then you start to see some of the statistics, like the science and engineering degrees that are awarded annually peaked back in the 1960s. And then nationwide, about 30% of all degrees given are in STEM, so it's only 30% of all the degrees are in STEM. And then in central Florida, our number is even lower. It's 20% of our degrees are awarded in STEM. In addition, 93% of the US public school kids between 5th and 8th grade are being taught the physical sciences by a teacher who does not have a degree or certificate in the physical sciences. And in the 2011 ACT scores, Florida ranked 42nd in math and 49th in science. So it is a bleak picture out there, and what we want to do is help really turn the tide. And one of the ways that we can do that is through our very strong community partnerships. I've included a slide that lists probably a little more than half of our partnerships, but this is an area that Marcia touched on really briefly and that we are very excited about, because what you see here are a list of organizations, universities, companies, government, who are interested in the Orlando Science Center and who are investing in the Orlando Science Center. And these really are two-way partnerships. The corporations believe that we're a good investment, that they're getting something back on their dollar. A lot of them are technology companies who are concerned about that pipeline of engineers, and they believe that the Orlando Science Center can and is making an impact in inspiring and educating our kids and getting them excited about some of those career opportunities. In addition, I'm also very proud that on this list you'll see, as an example, the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We have a partnership with them where every big gets a free membership to the Orlando Science Center. They can bring their little to visit the Science Center anytime they would like. We think it's a perfect opportunity and a great day out for them, and I think we have about 120 who've taken us up on that. In addition, having these kinds of partnerships has allowed us to reach more than 40,000 people, that's students and families, who have experienced the Science Center at a very significantly reduced price or for free because of the support of these corporations. So that's something we're very proud of. That's double what it was from the prior fiscal year. So we're very excited, and that is certainly a big part of what we want to do moving forward. So as a Science Center, we are, we're listening, we're learning, and we're leading in certain respects. We've been fortunate enough, we've gotten two very recent federal grant awards from the Institute for Museum and Library Services, IMLS. The first one allowed us to do some extensive market research in the community to make sure that we understand what the community really needs and wants and expects from its Science Center. The second one, we just got notification of the award, and we're very excited because it's going to allow us to do the same kind of work on the education side, to really work with the schools and do some detailed marketing and detailed research to figure out exactly what kind of products the schools need. So I think we've, you know, we've talked a bit about STEM and our ability to inspire and engage our youth. We're also seeing as a result of some of the research that the Science Center, one of our growth areas, is focused on families with young children. As I mentioned, we've opened the preschool to great success. We've always had an area within the Science Center called Kidstown, which is focused on our youngest learners, and we would love to expand that, and it seems like the data is proving out that that's an area of growth for us. We also certainly are recognizing the changing demographics in our region and striving to be a welcoming place for everybody and making sure that every child has access. We're envisioning new experiences for our audiences that are, one, authentic, and also deeper and a little more layered experience. And the Science Center is a second-stage growth company, and we're a strong contributor ourselves based on the jobs that we have to the economic landscape, and we're proud of that. So for the five-year plan, we want to serve as the cornerstone or hub for informal science learning and STEM. And I think from that partner slide, what you saw was there's really no place else like the Science Center that can bring together academia, industry, and government all under one umbrella. We are striving to create these new experiences at the Science Center, both at the Science Center but also in the community, and our outreach has grown significantly over the last few years. And we're aligning what we do to the key community and STEM segments, one of those being early childhood that we've talked about, another one being health and wellness and life sciences. We've got Medical City here in the region, and it's certainly an area of focus for us. There's also technology. We've got a lot of modeling and simulation in the area, along with digital media, optics, and lasers. Another focus for us is earth and space science, and then of course, environmental science and renewable energy. We want to definitely have a wonderful customer experience for all of our guests and make sure that each visitor knows that we care about them. We are working very, very closely with Orange County Public Schools to create a STEM school field trip offering, and this is again back to that sort of authentic and layered experience, where the kids would come in, they'd design something, they'd test it, they'd measure it, and then they go back around the horn. They see what worked and what didn't work, they change their design. So that's exciting, and we're working closely with Orange County on that. And last but certainly not least, we want to be here to support the cities. We'd like to be an integral part of supporting the city's vision for the community, to be an international city that uses its diversity amenities and economy to provide a high quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you Joanne. Just a couple of questions. On your, after you did your green building renovation, were you eligible for any designation of any sort?
We have applied for a LEED certification, and we are keeping our fingers crossed. We're in the process, and I believe we should be hearing probably in the next month, but we...
And under your analysis, you had the points...
Pardon me?
Under your analysis, you had the points necessary to get a LEED certification?
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay, great. And then secondly, do you measure, do you have measurables for school readiness for your pre-K program?
There are some, the formal metrics for the preschool occur when the kids enter school, so they will be tested. And we are VPK certified, so because we are VPK certified, then our children as they enter school will be tested, and then we will get feedback on their performance. So that's the official metric. We've also been talking a lot internally about other ways to measure the students' progress in terms of some partnerships that we're investigating, some possible grant opportunities, because I think the preschool is a wonderful opportunity for us to really track some data and figure out the impact of infusing more science at that age level. So we're very excited about that. And our first class of kids, we should get our first set of data, I believe, in February for the first class of graduating children, if you will.
Okay, great. And then I really appreciate what you guys have done over the last several years in terms of the strategic planning process. We know that for a little while we had a rough patch, and I think you guys really turned things around, got things headed in the right direction, and I appreciate the good work that's been done by the staff and the Board.
Thank you Mayor.
Okay, I didn't see who rung in first, so I'm just going to go from left to right. So Commissioner Lyman, then Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you for the report. Just a couple of questions. You've indicated that you wanted every child to have access and feel good, so can you go into a little bit more detail on how you're doing this?
Yeah, it's mainly through the community partnership. So we have corporations who are interested in reaching children, and what they'll do is support the Orlando Science Center around the messages of STEM. And so what we'll do is, depending on, in some cases, what the partner wants, we might target a geographical area. Some of them leave it up to us, but we're trying to target underserved kids, bring them into the Science Center, expose them to careers in science, technology, engineering, and math. So it's really all made possible through the partnership efforts.
So there's no staff outreach, just through your partners?
Oh, the staff, the staff actually execute all the programs. So the staff do go out, you know, it's the staff who actually carry out or deliver the message.
What's your looking at value in terms of outreach, your diversity levels, for here in Orlando primarily, or metro, when I say Orlando, I mean metro Orlando. How do you measure that?
What we do is, we keep track of how many children we reach, how many students we reach, and then what percentage are, typically in the schools, it would be Title I schools would be the category. So what we do is, we know how many school children, school children we reach, and then what percentage of those would fall under Title I schools.
What percentage is that?
The total reach is 80,000 students, school students, and of that, off the top, I think it's at least 20,000 to 25,000 are Title I schools, but I, Daisy, I can get that number to you, I will check that, but it's a significant number. We'd like to do more.
Well, it's been over 20 years, we've been pushing that, "do more," and I was just concerned about it. And how does that reflect on your staff? What about the diversity of your staff?
I think we're improving in terms of diversity of our staff. We've made a conscious effort to try to hire and reflect the community that we serve, and I think we're making good progress in that.
Well, I like the idea of preschool, and what does the future look like? I know that there may be space constraints, but if we're looking at the sciences and preparing our children for a workforce in Orlando, here in Orlando, grow them, incubate them here, particularly since we are a community or country that's importing nurses from the Philippines. I go to MIT and Harvard and look at the campuses, less than half of the students are American-born. My concern is magnets and science, and the peculiar thing is, with the Science Center, we've been talking about this over 20 years. So I like the preschool, but what is the future and long-term plans regird in school, the school? You've got a preschool, is there any, we used to have a little Science Center school program with, that was out in the community because you didn't have the space there. Are there any conversations regird in long-term magnet elementary kind of things that go beyond preschool into the sciences preparing, especially for girls? Was the project an objective over 20 years ago, about 20 years ago? Because I remember Commissioner Butler was on the county commission, and I think appointed me to be on a committee to help with the diversity of the Science Center, and I've never, over 20 years, seen that achieve its goal. But what about this opportunity and our preparing these kids, especially little girls, getting ready to, you know, feel very, very interested in the sciences, the math and whatnot?
Yeah. Well, in terms of a more formal school at the Science Center, like a magnet, we really haven't put that in our long-range plan as of yet. What we've been trying to do is partner with the schools and provide programs that can spark girls, underserved, you know, all the students that we can reach. So we haven't planned for a formal school other than the preschool that we have, but I think we're in a, just a great position to excite and engage and impact these kids. I think the program you might have mentioned where it went beyond the bounds of the Science Center was our camp program, which is thriving. We run camps all summer long for children, and we've added in academies that focus on the middle, middle school and high school level kids. And each one of those academies takes a school, or a school field trip, they take a field trip out to industry, and they learn a little bit about the possible careers. So that's a great example of trying to excite and engage kids. You know, we have programs like Otronicont around digital media, it's a four-day event. We've had girls workshops there, Girls in Gaming been taught at the Science Center. We have a strong program with Girl Scouts as well to try to engage young girls in the sciences.
Well, the program actually was with elementary school students because Grand Avenue was one of them, when Grand Avenue was in my district, and that's been over 10 years ago, where there really was a focus in going into the community, working with these elementary school kids, and then bringing them into the Science Center.
Okay, so that might have been part of the outreach program, which we still do. We do in-classroom workshops in the schools, where we'll go in and we'll augment a science class or bring in hands-on experiments, and sometimes we do that before they will come on a school visit. So maybe that's what you're referring to.
Because I think the entire community needs to feel engaged in the Science Center. We felt for many years that because of its location, that a number of people just did not feel engaged, or welcomed for that matter. And once it was built, we thought we had this big white elephant over there, and it's been very, very difficult, even here, my 13 years here, making sure that you become solvent in what had to be, you know, in terms of your finances, in terms... solvent in what had to be, you know, in terms of your finances, in terms of outreach. But the part of that was engaging the community, the total community, and that has always been my greatest disappointment in the Science Center, to make sure that we really touch the hearts and minds of the community because of the great need for scientists, but they've got to be interested early, early on. So I applaud you on the pre-K program. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
And I want to say thank you for what you're doing in our schools. It's really been encouraging to see the work that you're doing and the way you're reaching out in diversity in the schools, because the most important thing we can do is to get the students where they are and then engage them back. You answered a couple of questions. One is, there is now growing, a growing ease in creating charter schools in our state, and so the question would be, is there a possibility of looking at charter school or partnering with a charter school over there with you sometime in the future? It may be something you want to add to the strategic plan where you are partnering as opposed to being the sole sponsor.
Right. We have worked a little bit with the Lake Eola Charter School as well, and there's also a science school in the community that we've worked fairly closely with. So we've partnered with a few but haven't added it to the plan to actually create-
And I just, I know there's been some changes in the Orange County School Board and the state to ease that up a little bit, so that maybe some possibility to look at that, or relook at that again.
Appreciate that.
I also want to thank you for what you're doing in the area of District Three. The idea of reaching into our engineering schools, both in elementary and the high school, has been very important. And being partnering there has allowed us to reach into parts of our community we would not have normally have reached. You've done a good job with that. The other challenges I have is the expansion of the preschool? The BPK was my other question, you already answered that. Thank you for that. That really does give an incentive and, of course, a revenue stream a little bit for you, to be able to provide a nice compliment to those who can't afford, have some challenges in terms of the finances. So you guys do a great job over there. Every time I go over there, I get excited about what I see and what you do. And I remember the old, old Science Center, which, so I've been around a little while. But it's great to have you there, great to be part of our community, and great to see the changes that are happening. It's exactly in the right direction we need to go, and the stability's going to allow us to be able to do more things in the community that we, in the past, we haven't been able to accomplish. So I'll tell you how much I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner? Commissioner Diamond, then Commissioner Ains.
Thank you. Is this microphone on? I hear you now. I'm sorry. First of all, thank you. Thanks for the good news you're bringing us, and thanks for the presentation. But anyway, thank you for the good news, and I'm glad to see all the good things going on. We are, we've become members again, so I'm getting to see the Science Center a lot, and I appreciate it, and I'll probably pay more attention to it now, since I've visited it more now. Couple of questions. Do you have any statistics as far as where your visitors come from, the folks that walk through the door, they, as far as zip codes, are most of Orlando folks, Orange County folks? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we do collect data. We collect zip code data on our visitation, and we see the majority of people do come from Orange County, but we get people from all, probably seven surrounding counties, and people from out of state. About, on average, I would say it's about 15% of our attendance is considered to be tourism, so it would be outside of our region. So really, we know we're a community-based organization, and that does certainly affect the way you make decisions. We're, we'll get about 15% tourism.
And does that stay the same? Does that come up, come down?
It's gone up a little bit, and then there are certain events that we have where you'll see that rise. One of them is Otronicon, that we do get some tourist development tax funding to put on that event, and we do see an influx of tourism during that event, and I think that it might reach like 30% of the attendance comes from outside the region for that specific event.
Can you tell us some of the new exhibits or new movies that might sell?
Sure. Right now, we have an exhibit that's done very well for us on guitars. It's a wonderful blend of art and science, and we do see when we blend those things together, we get a very good response, and we were the world debut for that exhibit. So we've got guitars there. In addition, we've got an exhibit called Harry's Big Adventure, but it's on bugs. I always want to call it Harry's Bug Adventure. And it's a wonderful, interactive exhibit, talks about the insect world, the role of insects in the environment, and how important they are. Probably the biggest thing that we have coming down the pike is, a year from now, we will be opening Star Wars at the Orlando Science Center, and it is a blockbuster. And it's probably the first exhibit since the Bodies exhibit, if you'll recall that, that we would actually consider to be a blockbuster exhibit, was developed by the Boston Museum of Science, which is an icon in our industry, along with Lucas Films, and it is a wonderful blend of technology as well as authentic memorabilia from the movies, so we're thrilled to have that. Let's see, movie-wise. Yeah, okay, the one I'm excited about coming in the spring, sorry I had to ask Jeff, was Tornado Alley. And there is a Doppler vehicle that we're trying to get that could come for the opening weekend of that. It's a great film about natural disasters, tornadoes, that I think will play very well in our audience. We have the film Arabia playing right now. We had the film Ultimate Wave also playing, which had kind of a local aspect and about waves, and it's a fun, fun kind of summer film.
And tell us a little bit about your, you have some goals to increase revenues, increase visitors. Can you tell us a little bit about how you, how you think you can go about doing that?
Yeah, and we've, we've kind of been on that path for the last few years, and our visitors are responding to changes that we're making inside the Science Center, as well as we've been able to upgrade, upgrade some of our offerings in terms of the outreach products. So really, what we've been trying to do is invest as much as we can back into our product and what we can, what we can offer to people, and what we're seeing is a very good response to that. So that's, I'd say that's the general focus, and then we have a lot of specific plans. Some of them are around the STEM learning opportunities. I'll give you an example of one, if you want me to keep yakking on.
Sure.
But it's a, we took two corners of the Science Center in a hall called Science Park, and it's sheet metal that's up, but it's a magnetic ball wall. So there are all these different pieces of PVC pipe and shapes and hoses and connectors, and kids are, we have some challenges where it'd say, "Okay, in six pieces, create this, and your ball must travel from here to there in this amount of time." And so it's just being able to create experiences where kids have to think about it a little bit, design something, and what we're seeing are longer dwell times in some of those exhibits, and, which adds to the value really of the visit, overall visit to the Science Center.
Yeah, I liked that one, the PVC thing. That was, I thought that was a great exhibit, and I think it's, it was amazing to watch the kids that were, that were playing with it, and I did too. And I thought it was a lot of fun, and it was amazing how long people stayed there, and I think it was good to put it there, because in that same room, you've got some other exhibits that I think are really popular, like you've got the airplane simulator and the race car simulator. And I think while people are waiting to get on those, it's good to have something across the way that they can play with, occupy themselves. So I thought that was a good, a good placement to put it there for that reason. Let me ask you something else. One thing that I've heard occasionally and I've noticed is sometimes you'll go to do an exhibit and it's not working, or there's, you know, some issue with it. Tell us about what you're doing with maintenance and how you can work on that.
Yeah. Well, and as we've gotten more financially viable and stable, we have added to the staff, and that's part of investing back in the Science Center. There are, I think there are like 350 exhibits within the building, so it's a lot of work to keep everything up and going, and what we've done is, I think, a couple of things. One, we've added some expertise that was definitely needed. We measure everything as well, so there's a, you know, morning rounds, evening rounds, everything is measured, we know what it looks like. The other big initiative for us is, in terms of customer service, we do exit surveys, and we also evaluate any kind of comment, card, feedback, letter, voicemail, whatever we get, and we trend all of those, because it is, one of the things I mentioned was, it's very, very important for people to have a wonderful experience every time they come in. So we've made a lot of progress on that front, and if something really is not working, we will get it out, off of the floor and out of the guest view, and we have some exhibits that we can put in place, so we have kind of a contingency of things that can move in and out of the floor. And if something is down and it, you know, it can't be moved, then we pay very high attention to it and get it fixed as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ains.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Ms. Newman.
Good morning, Commissioner.
You know, one of the questions that I did have was, what's the next big exhibit that's going to be coming to the Science Center? So I think you kind of hit on that a little bit. But community partnerships, and there is one area in there that you talked about was Prism Project. What is the Prism Project?
Yeah, the Prism Project, that stands for Promoting Regional Improvement in Science and Math, and it is a group of people led by Jim Schott, who's one of the former superintendent of Orange County Public Schools, and he's got a board of community leaders, and they have, they're very interested in, in working with the schools and understanding what the schools need for STEM learning. And what we've done is, we've partnered with them, we've given them space at the Science Center. They needed a place to work out of, basically, so they have an office in the Science Center that we've given to them. They hold their meetings in the Science Center. I am part of their executive board. So it's, it's an effort that, a community group that I think parallels what, what our efforts and concerns are in terms of promoting STEM initiatives and trying to work with the schools. It's great having Jim Schott as part of that, because he is very, very familiar with Orange County Public Schools, having been a prior superintendent, and so it's, it's turning out to be, I think, a very nice collaboration. We're starting to make some headway there.
Great. You know, one of my daughters teaches sixth grade science at Culver Middle School, and she's been there to the Science Center, taking a group of kids there. But this in-classroom workshop-
Yes.
-in the schools, how long have you been doing that? And does this program also reach into the elementary schools?
It does. As a matter of fact, we have one big program that's sponsored by OUC, where we've hit every fifth grader in their service territory. We're entering year three of that with a renewable energy message and a water conservation message. So we've reached over 15,000 children the past two years in that initiative, and that was all fifth graders. And that's the Science Center going into the classroom and working with those kids in their class. So there are some geared toward elementary-age children, and there are others, there are a variety of offerings. One that's very popular is a CSI kind of a format, because that's such a popular topic, you know, on TV, but, but there's a lot of real science that's involved, and the kids have a lot of fun with that. So we reach both middle, middle schools and elementary schools with those programs.
Well, you know I'm going to be passing this information on, and-
I expect it.
So is there, would you be the contact person, or is there a contact person for this?
Yeah, it would be our education director, Heather Norton, and her, the information is out there on the website, Commissioner Ains.
Okay. Okay, I'll have her do a little, little homework too then. And then, has Marcia told you about the Nearest Matching Grants Program? Specifically, what I was thinking about was after-school science and math programs or projects and this kind of thing would certainly help, especially as you're dealing with your preschool children, but specifically those middle school kids and those elementary school kids that can come to the Science Center through some after-school program to help with their learning capacity so that they can do well on these testings.
Well, we'll check into those then. Thank you for that.
All right, good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. One last follow-up, Joanne. I know one of the challenges several years ago was, the public schools had decreased some of their field trip opportunities because of the transportation cost. You've mentioned 80,000 students, or what's the 80,000, and how's the mix in terms of public school kids that come on field trips?
Yeah, we've, we've actually grown, this was the, the year we ended, we grew the school field trip program for the first time in three years, and it went up by 20, 22 or 23%. We do see, we saw growth both in the public schools as well as the private schools, and our private schools had kind of drifted off a little bit, so we did make a concerted effort there, because as the quality of the programs come up, the private schools are getting more and more engaged. The schools still are having difficulty. I think part of, part of the increases are partners who are willing to sponsor schools so we can get them in there at very low cost or no cost to the school. But we've also done a couple of other things, and one of them is working closely with teachers. We have a Science Ambassador Program. We've got about 15 teachers from a couple of different counties who will come in and meet with us. I believe it's four or five times a year, and they're reviewing our curriculum, they're reviewing even new exhibits like the magnetic ball wall, which we're calling the Gravitron. So they're looking at all of our offerings, they're giving us advice, they're helping us create the right kind of product mix.
Okay, well, thank you for, very much for coming in and updating us on all the good things that are happening at the Science Center, and thank you to the board who serves without compensation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, in terms of our workshop, we are adjourned.